Um, tonight's a special night. We are going to swear in our new Commissioner, Chris McDonald. So we will do that before we start our meeting. So if our city attorney and Mr. McDonald would go ahead. I'm sorry, our city judge. I said that wrong. I'm sitting there looking at you. I, I, I know you're the judge, your attorney as well. So anyway.
I, Christopher McDonald.
I, Christopher McDonald.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity.
That I will perform with fidelity.
The duties of the Office of Commissioner.
The duties of the Office of Commissioner.
Of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
To which I have been duly elected.
To which I have been duly elected.
And which I'm about to assume.
In which I'm about to assume.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
To support the constitutions of Tennessee.
To support the constitutions of Tennessee.
The United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the Charter of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Charter of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
And to faithfully perform.
To faithfully perform.
The duties of the Office of Commissioner.
The duties of the Office of Commissioner.
Of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Representing all the citizens.
Representing all the citizens.
Of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Item number two on the agenda, roll call. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner McDonald?
Present.
Commissioner Hall?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson? Vice Mayor Butler?
Present.
Mayor Anderson?
Present. Item number three is prayer and pledge. If everyone would please stand. Vice Mayor Butler?
Board remains today to cook matters of business, got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is mayor's comments. I want to thank Chief Humphries tonight for being here to keep us all safe and just protect each one of us. And I'm not sure who's on the metal detector, but thank them as well. I'm excited that everyone's here tonight. We have a good crowd and we have some, you know, important business to discuss tonight. So we're glad you're here and glad everyone's at home watching. Item number five, approval of the agenda.
Second.
Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item number five passes five zero. Item number six, citizens' comments.
We have two tonight, Mayor. The first one is Ms. Connie Chadwick.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you for, for allowing us to speak tonight, Mayor Anderson and Commissioners. Let me introduce myself. Some of you already know me and some of you don't. I'm a lifelong resident of Williamson County and I was raised here in Fairview. My name is Connie Chadwick. I've also been an attorney in Williamson County now for almost 10 years. And as all of you probably know, and maybe some of you know, we have some important local elections that will be decided on March the 5th. I wanted to bring my dear friend and former law partner, David Veal, to introduce him to the crowd and to, and to everyone who manages the city of Fairview. He will be on the ballot. There are two attorneys running for judge on March the 5th, and I'd like to introduce David Veal.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to this body and congratulations, Commissioner McDonald. I'm honored to be one of the first citizens to speak in front of you in your new position. Thank you for what you do. I am David Veal and I'm running for Circuit Court Judge here in Williamson County. My mom was a schoolteacher and my dad was a mailman. So I grew up in a home of public service. When I was 13 years old, I was at church and youth group and a family had just moved to town in Brentwood. And in walked this 12-year-old girl and she just took my breath away. And I haven't been able to breathe ever since. We just celebrated our 27th anniversary. We have three incredible children. My two daughters, twin daughters graduated from high school a couple of years ago and my son is a sophomore at Franklin High. When I got out of college, I did not go straight to law school. I actually joined the Metropolitan Nashville Police Department and I was a police officer for seven years. I was a patrol officer, worked the midnight shift for a long time. I was the law instructor at the police academy and then I was a patrol sergeant. My experience as a police officer taught me what the Constitution really means. We see it as a document, we read about it, but for my years as an officer, I lived it. When I say I'm a constitutional conservative, what that means to me is I hold the Constitution above all else. That is the power from which all other governmental powers flow. I was the officer standing outside the door with my handgun, trying to decide in a split second, under the Fourth Amendment, do I have the duty and the responsibility to make entry into this house? I did that as an officer, I did that as the law instructor as well, trying to teach other officers the right way to do it. And for the last 19-plus years as a trial attorney, that's been my bedrock, the Constitution. I've handled every type of case that will come in front of this court. Civil, criminal, divorce, complex business litigation, probate matters, everything that will come in front of this trial court I've handled. And most importantly, I've handled jury trials as first chair. Sometimes just by myself, sometimes I had other people that were second and third chair, but I've handled jury trials in both civil and criminal case. And that's important because the day after the election takes effect, there could be a murder trial. And both the family of the victim and the defendant are entitled to have a judge on the bench that's been there before, that knows these rules of evidence, that knows the rules of procedure, that knows how it works, to make sure it works right, so that ultimately justice is done. Now in terms of politics, you should not be able to tell a judge's politics from the bench. In a perfect world, you couldn't, because a judge is supposed to take the law, apply it to the facts, and that's it. But we've all seen, well, that's not always the case. And I can commit to you that if elected to this possession, position, I will take the law, apply the facts, and make my decision. I'm a law and order guy, and I'll end with this. I was honored that the Fraternal Order of Police for Williamson County voted to endorse me as their candidate in the upcoming election. Early voting starts two weeks from yesterday on Valentine's Day. So I ask that you do your homework, you look at the candidates, compare the experience, and vote Veal for Valentine's, and then on March the 5th. If you have any questions, on my website is my contact information. I would be glad to sit down, have a cup of coffee, and talk to any one of you and tell you who I am and why I think I would be the right person for this job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The second one was Mr. Veal.
Yeah, is that all?
That is all, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Happy to say it again, Mayor.
I didn't know, I didn't know if there were, if there was anyone else who had added their name. Item number seven, public announcements, awards and recognition, city events. Mr. Richard Ross.
Good evening. I have several things to go over. The first is the Easter egg hunt, which is on March the 16th. It's gonna be at Booy Nature Park. And then we're accepting applications for the Arts and Crafts Fair, which will also be at Booy Nature Park on May the 11th. There'll be food vendors, craft vendors, you name it. And we're also accepting sponsorships for July the 3rd. If you're interested in being a sponsor for July 3rd, please come by and see me, or you can give me a call at 615-799-2484. The next thing I want to touch on is the winter weather storm that we had two weeks ago. The Public Works Department, they put out approximately 175 tons of salt throughout the city. The Public Works Department, each day they approximately went 200 miles throughout the city, laying out salt and plowing as well. Each Public Works employee worked approximately 120 hours during the winter storm, prior to the winter storm getting ready for it and the cleanup of equipment afterwards. And on the public inform, on the public information side, we put out 18 alerts throughout the community. Those alerts were sent out through our social media website and our message alerting system. And if you're interested in signing up for the free message alerting system, anyone can text FV ALERTS to triple eight, triple seven. Again, text FV ALERTS to triple eight, triple seven. And one last thing I forgot is tomorrow, there is a event at Booy Nature Park. It's a wetlands hike and it begins at 1:00 PM at Shelter One. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions of Richard? We good?
Okay.
Item number eight, staff comment, comments and monthly reports. A, community services. Ethan Greer?
Good evening, Board. We've been very busy down in the planning office over the last month, month and a half, two months, last six months. It's been very busy. Over the last, last six weeks or so, we've met with IDT and started to really dig into fixing some of the glitches and communication through the IDT system. And we have some of those rolling out very soon for all those changes. And we have a few things. Over 2023 residential building permits for the year, we issued 124 residential building permits, which put us right about in line with where we've been the last few years. Couple more, I would expect this next year, we probably have an increase in that with where our projects are and what has been approved. I'd expect a slight increase in building permits. We have had a variance request that has come in and a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting has been set for March 7th at 6:00 PM. It'll be the one hour prior to your first Board of Commissioners meeting in March. And then our zoning RFQ, zoning ordinance RFQ is out and about, and we are expecting all of our responses back from all of the applicants for that. Those responses are due by February 26th. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Greer? Item number B is Police Department Report. Chief Humphries?
Good afternoon. This will be our report that we would have done in January, that Snowpocalypse threw us all off a little bit. So this will be our December report. The December report, we were at 27, the prior month of November, stayed at 27 staffing for the month of December. Pretty consistent with our overtime. Most of that was accumulated during Shop with the Cop and those kind of special event things we did. Training hours dipped just a little bit for the month, but did consist of patrol rifle, cops in court, and our detectives that handle the sexual offender registry did a training course on that, how to manage that. Our operational report for the month, the calls of service and self-initiated calls did dip a little bit for the month of December, the 798 from the 972 the previous month. Activity for the month, pretty consistent, arrests were down just to 89, the domestics about the same. The DUIs were up, that is a, a safety initiative. We are pushing very hard to try to get those, those intoxicated offenders off our streets. We did have a good month there. Drug charges were down just a little bit. Theft was down a little bit. Citations also down. And traffic accidents, pretty consistent at 23, 22 property damage, only one injury. And again, we're glad to say no fatalities for the month. Nothing to report for the public relations side of that. We did that in December, told you about the Shop with the Cop, how many kids that we, we, we pre-reported on that during that meeting. So just to recap for the year, the Fairview Police Department, we answered 11,997 calls for service or self-initiated activity. We had 1,096 arrests, 1,430 citations, and 5,283 training hours for the year. So it's a pretty busy year. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Item C is Fire Department Report. Chief Hughes?
Mayor, Commissioners. This too is our report for the month of December, and it will also have our year in report. For the month of December 2023, we responded to 138 emergency calls for service. We had 22 overlapping incidents during the month, six incidents where a fire was extinguished. We had four mutual or automatic aid responses to surrounding jurisdictions. Our average response time was down a little bit from the previous month of four minutes, 38 seconds. And then time on scene operating was down a little bit, 17 minutes and 35 seconds. Again, to report an emergency, we are asking the citizens to call 911 first. We are still getting calls at the station to report true emergencies, which slows us down. And sometimes if we're not there, there's no one there to answer the phone. Excellent. The December call breakdown, again, rescues and emergency medical calls is our biggest piece of the pie at nearly 70%, which is down because we were running 76% most of the year. Our fires were up a little bit in December. Next call. This is the December heat map. Again, it looks similar as it has over, month over month for the year. Fire prevention activities, which is our fire marshal, he did 13 fire and life safety inspections for the year and follow-ups that completed the 2023 year of inspections. He started 1st of January, starting for the 24 inspections. So he'll be coming back around to see all the businesses. Again, we had, again, just a few minor corrective action notices were issued. He did six pre-fire plans and five plan reviews were completed. We had five hours of public education and he completed a 20 hours and a half of code training. If any city residents need their smoke alarms in their homes and they don't have them, we have a couple of different ways now. Add it to the website on the fire page. You can, there's a fillable form. They can go there and click on it, get all their information. The fire marshal will contact you and set up a time for the crews to come out and install those alarms. Or you can call the station and, and set up a time with them on the phone. Excellent. December training hours are pretty low for us, 134 hours, but during the month of December, we normally do makeup classes. Anybody that was off shift during a class that they needed, will do those makeup classes in December. This is the 20, 22 and 23 comparison. Our total call volume for the year of 2023 was 1,443 calls. That was up from 1,246 the previous year. Fire calls were up. All, all the calls were basically up, but our time on scene was down from the previous year. And then our response time was down for the previous year. This is the heat map. 23 is on, on the left side, 22 is on the right side. Again, they look real similar. Some of those areas are just the, getting a lot bigger because of our population density and some of those areas is increasing. So our call is increasing on those areas also. Just the quick stats for comparison, the dotted line would be your 22 call volume per month. And the solid line is your call volume for 23. We had a, almost a 16% overall call volume increase for 2023. We had a 40% increase in fires. Mid-afternoon is our busiest time of the day and Saturdays are our busiest day. 2023 significant events or achievements, we completed construction of a new fire training facility. We have used that a lot and we plan to use it a lot this year. We completed the MS quarter remodel and classroom construction. We got the, the failing rear pad replaced. We completed flooring projects at the station. We selected a design firm to design Station 32. We brought a full-time fire marshal on and we did our first commissioner camp. We plan to hopefully do that every year. For 2023, our training hours, we did 5,873 hours. That's about 280 hours per fire employee of training for the year. These are just some of the achievements from the firefighters that are doing, some of the certifications they completed in 2023. I think that's probably the end of the report. Oh, sorry. There is an ISO, because we always get questions about ISO. We're an ISO Class III for the city. If you look to the left graph, that is state of Tennessee fire departments, we're in that Class III. There's 62 departments in Tennessee that, that have achieved a Class III rating. Again, on that rating, one is the best, 10 is, is no fire protection at all. And then countrywide, we're a Class III and same thing. That's it for the report. Any questions?
Thank you. Item 8D is Finance Report. Mr. Darty?
Thank you, Mayor, Board. We have the first sheet in your packet, Board of Commissioners' budget, and that's your expenditure budget for December of 2023. It's got a month, year to date, and then a month. Of course, we're on a fiscal year budget, so it's basically half a year. The next item in your packet are the, is a summary financial statement through December with revenues in detail. Keep in mind, this is the original budget. No, nothing has taken effect until you approve the amended budget. But, and then down on the, on page three, and I'm talking about the operating general fund, you can look on expenditures and you've got each department and where they are percentage-wise on their budget. Then it also shows the other accounts past that. Next is all of our accounts with our banking institution and balances. Everything's very healthy. And then the last page is our general fund reserves with, with local government investment pool. That is my report. I will entertain any questions, anybody has regarding finances.
Anyone have a question for Mr. Darty? Okay. Item 8E, City Manager Report. Mr. Darty?
Thank you, Mayor, Board. First of all, I'd like to welcome and congratulate new Commissioner Chris McDonald. I wanted to tell you that Chad McV, Chad, man, Chad Gray, I've got an engineer on my brain. But Chad Gray came by, he, he, he has a certificate from the Election Commission. He's lacking one signature. I'm, I'll get that next week. And they, they've put together a certificate for you, so just know that's coming. But congratulations. The city is accepting applications for Public Works. We've gotten in several applications, but I just wanted to announce that to anybody interested, everything, it's on the website, Richard's blast, social media, and we've got, we've got some good response. Also wanted to announce Parks, Police and Court are fully staffed for the, I can't remember the last time they were all fully staffed at the same time. So I'm, I'm very, very happy about that. Very encouraged with the, the staff we've been able to put together. And I can't wait to see the outcome. Also, last thing, we're going to have the audit presentation next meeting, February 15th. Everything, it's really exciting to see where we are. You know, I got, I know a few of you know where we were when I got here and where we are now. And, and it's, it's just very exciting to know that we have opportunities that we can, we can take advantage of some, some things. But they'll be here, another clean audit. And it's, they'll be here February 15th for you to go over it. And I have, I have ordered five hard copy for each Commissioner. So anyway, appreciate it. And anything, any questions on that?
Thank you. Item number nine, Consent Agenda. 9A, Minutes from January 4th, 2024, Board of Commissioner Work Session.
Approval.
Second.
Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 9A, four, one abstention. Item 9B, Minutes from January 4th, 2024, Board of Commissioner Regular Meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 9B, four, with one abstention. Item 10, Old Business. 10A, Annexation, Crowcut Road. We will open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, please come forward.
Mayor, Commissioners?
Citizens of Fairview and my neighbors, we don't live in the city of Fairview. I'm Diane-
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you for one second. I should have said this. If you could just state your name and address?
That was next.
Okay.
I'm Diane Ellis.
Thank you.
I live at 7861 Crowcut Road. And this resolution that we're talking about is the two properties that are just beside me. I sold one of those five acre tracts to Randy Beck a long time ago and he built a house on it. The people who, the man and his wife who bought that property for their sons, two of their sons are living there now, one on each property. They're good neighbors. I'm glad they're there. The plan is to build a third house on that 10 acres. a third house on that ten acres. In order for those folks to build that third house, apparently they have to be annexed into the city, and they would be the zoned R forty. I have no objection to there being a third house on that ten acres. I think there's plenty of room. I do have concern about that property being in the city. Those of us who live out there own Crowcut, live out there because we don't want to live in the city. Not that there's anything wrong with Fairview. I've been out here over thirty years, and I love the community, but I like the community better than I like the city. Um, so, I, I wish there were something that could be done so these fellas could have that third house on that ten acres without becoming part of the city. I share a property line from Crowcut all the way to the back of both of our properties. I have goats. I like chickens. I like living in the country. If we annex that fi- that ten acres sitting out there by itself, then I fear that we are changing the, the complexion of our community out there just a little bit. Makes it easier for the next person. As I drive through Fairview, Fairview doesn't look much like Fairview did when I moved out here. If you go along Northwest Highway, there's hardly a tree left. It's all dirt, because they're gonna build lots of houses, and I understand people wanting to move to Fairview. It's a beautiful community, but I think, uh, the reason so many of us moved here ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years ago was that there were some trees, and we could have some pockets of a little space. And so, even though I love my neighbors, I just really hate to see that property be annexed into the city. I don't think it really serves them very well, and I know I'm not very happy about it. Thank you.
My name is Reba Greer. I live at seventy-eight oh six Crowcut Road, and we oppose this resolution to annex those parcels. My husband and I own two hundred acres approximately, and we're one, one lot away from the property that's asking for annexation. The area that we live in, the county, is currently zoned at five-acre tracts for residential lots. The zoning requested on this property would allow nine or ten houses on that ten acres. I understand that the owners are not, not planning on that, but there's no reason that couldn't happen. That density would completely change the character of our area. And another thing about that property is it, it is not contiguous to any Fairview property. It would create an island that's discouraged by the state. It causes problems with jurisdiction for police and fire departments as they determine, try to determine jurisdiction. It also creates an issue with road maintenance. It also creates a dangerous precedent. If future requests are approved, the city could become a patchwork. If they're denied, the city could face lawsuits. Therefore, we request that you vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak during the public hearing? Okay, I will close the public hearing.
But I live across the street also, uh, seven eight six six Crowcut Road.
What's your name?
Derek McFarlane.
Thank you.
Um, I just agree with the, the ladies here. I don't agree that, I think that if they were able to build a third house, do that, but to be zoned RS forty doesn't really make sense. You have the Greers right there, Diane, and then us also. So, this doesn't make sense. I agree with the ladies, so that's it.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm closing the public hearing. Item ten A two, Resolution seventy-eight dash twenty-three, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, with RS forty single-family residential zoning, map zero one eight, parcel zero two six point one zero, and zero two six point zero four, seven eight five seven, and seven eight five nine, Crowcut Road, ten point zero seven plus or minus acres. Owner, owners Paul and Carla Ann Creed. Mr. Greer?
The applicant has stated that their reason for proposing this annexation was to annex into Fairview and divide the ten acres of property that they have at seventy-eight five seven, which is approximately five-acre tract, and seventy-eight five nine, which is approximate five-acre tract, into three three-point-three acre lots that will be given to each of their three children. To recap, uh, as this has been several months, uh, since it was at the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission moved this to the Board of Commissioners with a recommendation to deny this request. And just to lay out some of the facts with this property in particular, this property is non-contiguous with the city municipal limits of Fairview. With that, the only way to annex this property is by owner consent. The owner has, is the person who is the applicant in this, uh, process, and they have asked to come into the city of Fairview. With that, uh, the property has to be within the urban growth boundary of Fairview. This property is located within the urban growth boundary of Fairview. And when it comes to the recommendations and guidance laid out by MTS and, and the state, uh, creating islands of property is not the preferred recommendation, um, although it is not illegal to have a parcel that is not located contiguous with the municipal boundary. And just want to make sure all of the facts are, are out there as far as what this parcel is. Um, it's relatively close to a parcel that's accessed off of Highway ninety-six north of this parcel. Um, but after speaking with Mike Madison, the county planner, speaking with the applicant, for them to be able to divide this property into three three-point-three acre tracts, the only path forward for the applicant is to be annexed into the city. There are no alternatives to be able to divide the property into three three-point-three acre tracts from the county perspective. Their current zoning is MGA five, which would be one house per five acres. They do have the ability to build an, to build additional homes on the property. Those are called additional principal dwellings to where all of their family could live on the same property. Um, they could build up to four homes, two homes per parcel, but they could not split that individually into three three-point-three acre parcels. And so, for their desire of what they would like to do to leave this to their children, uh, their only path forward is, is to be annexed into a municipality. Since they fall within the city of Fairview's urban growth boundary, the city of Fairview would be their, their city to get annexed into. If you have any questions, feel free to-
Yes, would you repeat, uh, about the possibility of building four houses?
There is a provision in the Williamson County zoning ordinance for additional principal dwellings, and within that, uh, the principal who would be in the additional dwelling has to be a family member of the, of the owner of the property. And since they are split into two five-acre tracts, they could build an additional principal dwelling on each five-acre tract, uh, for a family member.
But that does not give them their own property.
That's correct. The property would, would remain as the primary owner.
Primary owner's property with houses that are in, uh, dwellings for other people, but that one person would own the whole thing.
That's correct.
So it's not divided equally with the three children.
That is correct.
Okay, so let's, um, have a motion, and then we'll move forward.
Could I ask one question to the attorney before that? And then I would, depending on your answer, I would ask the Creeds, but would it be possible, I know this is not going with what they just said about everybody having equal land. I didn't know this was about having equal land or about having that third house built. If it is just about the third house being built, could the owner not request to have one acre of the ten acres annexed into the city for a third house to be built? And then that way, the citizens are at ease knowing that the other houses, the other nine houses they were speaking of can't be built?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure they answered that question. I, I think there would be an issue, uh, the, the parcels are not currently divided, so no, I don't think you can annex-
No, 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 I mean, I know, I'm just saying, if they went and had a survey done and had new lines drawn, which anybody could do at their place if they so choose, I guess, and say, "I want to ask for this parcel with the new coordinates to be in, but not the other ones."
Yes. I mean, a parcel of any size could theoretically be annexed if it's within the urban growth boundary and owner consent.
Okay.
Ma'am, we, we, we can't dialogue right now. That had to happen during public hearing. I'm sorry. I entertain a motion, please.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, to follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission for denial of the annexation.
I will second that.
Now, would someone, uh, from the family who would like to represent come forward? Hi there. If you would just state your name and where you live for the record.
My name is Brandon Creed. I live at seven, uh, seven five, uh, five seven Crowcut Road.
Thank you. And what is your, uh, and your family's intention for the property, please?
Uh, our intention is to, we want to divide it up evenly between the three sons of my father to three-point-three-three acres, and we plan on knocking down one house and then building two houses on the property. So it would only be three houses, and no more, no less.
Mike Madison, the, uh, county planner, was contacted if, and asked if there was any other way that this could be done. There's, it is an MGA five zoning presently. There is an opportunity for some zonings to be family exemption. This is not one. Um, we did, uh, do a corridor annexation for then Brownland Farms, now Bellhaven, which has just passed, which would make this property contiguous if the board so chose. Um, it is not illegal for us to annex this property, even though it is not contiguous per our, um, city planner, who is a consultant with us, Kevin Chastain of Griggs and Mahoney, who instructed us, uh, as to that during our commissioner camp. We are reciprocal with fire and police, so it makes no difference if you're in county or city. Fire, our fire goes to county, our fire serves here. Our police go to county, our police serve here. We have, um, done the corridor annexation, as I said in the past, which, when we, um, annexed that, it allowed the property, which is now Bellhaven, to be, um, contiguous. So I just wanted to bring some facts out about this so that we can, um, decide based on facts.
Where does this leave us on the road?
The road, from what I understand, and I believe you have spoken-
Yes.
It's Greg-
Red Bolt, and there's another one named Hart.
With Williamson County, um, Roads Department.
Yes.
He said that if we annex the property, they would still maintain the roads.
So it will not be a city street?
It could be a city street if we decided to annex the road as a corridor like we did with Bellhaven.
Mayor, I'd like to know more about this possibility of, uh, annexing one acre rather than the full ten.
I'd like to speak to the annexation of the one acre versus the full ten. Uh, due to both of these parcels being separate currently and being just, it's five-point-oh-one, five-point-oh-two acres individual, if you were to, um, they would have to combine those to be able to separate out the one acre. If they were to just separate out one acre out of one of these two five-acre parcels, they would be a non-conforming property to their zoning in MGA five, and that would be, uh, not approved, because that would make them, they would be becoming non-conforming, which is not the, uh, intent of Williamson County by any means.
But it would be not approved by whom? If they're already currently zoned something, why would they go back before the county? They would only be bringing one acre to the city.
So they would have to separate that out with the county prior to coming here, because then that would, they'd have to separate out the one acre dealing with the county prior to coming to the city, asking for that one acre to be annexed into, into Fairview.
And the county will not allow that?
No. And that would be non-conforming, taking that to the county. I, I don't see that.
Be kind of like the parcel we just took in a month or so ago that was non-conforming, and it was voted positively, and we knew he didn't have the easement to get to his property, and we voted for it anyway.
That property was conforming within county regulations, but not, it was non-conforming to city regulations.
But the city took it in non-conforming. Why are you saying the county wouldn't take in something that's non-conforming when it's already theirs to begin with?
Because as it stands today, it is conforming, but they would not allow an alteration that would make it non-conforming.
So you're telling me if he subdivided his property and put up an acre for sale, the county could stop the sale of that property?
He would not be able to subdivide that property unless he combined them into ten acres and then maintained at least five acres of property.
If, if I may, I believe what you're referencing is the, the county Planning Commission would have to approve the subdivision plat before it could be recorded. In order to get there, they'd have to have a big enough parcel in order to subdivide, so they'd have to combine and then try to subdivide, and they couldn't do that on the size parcel they have.
Okay.
So they could not create, they could not cut out one acre and still create conforming parcels within the county's regulation.
But it sounds to me like we're, we're jumping around. If the, currently how it is, it can have four family houses. So if you take out one acre and bring it into the city, and you can build the one house, then that leaves you with nine acres. You may not can have four, but surely you can keep the two, because they're family house- You may not can have four, but surely you can keep the two because they're family houses. So it sounds like we don't really have all the facts. We're saying the county won't allow it when I'm not sure that's the case.
I think what we're trying to communicate is that currently subdividing one acre would not be consistent with the county's regulation. The county would not approve a one-acre subdivision under their current regulations. It would not match.
Correct, I agree with that, but that one acre would be coming to us. The nine acres would be staying in the county. They don't need to approve the one acre, we do.
Well, I think the problem is it's a chicken or the egg. They have to get the subdivision approved and recorded before we can annex that one acre that has then been separated. So it's a chicken or the egg problem.
Right. Would the main goal for your family be to have three houses built there or for everybody to have equal land?
Equal land. Not about the houses, it's about the property being split up evenly.
Do we currently have a three-acre zoning?
We do not. Our largest residential zone is RS 40, single-family, 40,000 square feet, approximately one acre.
What would it take to create a three-acre zoning?
That would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance. That would take a planning commission recommendation and then two readings in front of the Board of Commissioners.
I think that's our answer.
Mayor?
Yes?
So in my experience and past annexation experience, Williamson County has given us the road, and so if we take, if we annex this property and we would go from the city limits, the road would extend to this parcel. And so we would be taking on about a mile and a half of road from where the city limits currently sit, and that would open up about 300 acres of property that's currently sitting in the county that would then be contiguous to the city limits that are not currently contiguous. So it would essentially open a growth corridor that necessarily right now isn't a contiguous area for future growth. It would kind of kick off a larger growth area.
That's if we were annexing the road.
I think you have to, based off prior annexations. Williamson County told us that if we take the property, we take the road as well.
Well, in the mayor's discussion with the county highway department, they said, "No, we didn't have to."
Can I speak? I spoke with Greg Bolt and Art, and they said that City of Fairview has all the power in terms of what is actually annexed in. You can annex in up until the road, and you can tell the county that they have to maintain the road. The county can't say yes or no, all they can do is acknowledge the information.
In prior annexations, maybe five years ago, we would annex property and not annex the road. Then eventually, the road started automatically coming in, and the county told our planner at the time that we did not have an option if we adopted the property. We also took the road access to the property. So if there's a letter or something that says, "We'll maintain this road, it won't be a city road," but as prior has always been, we've taken on the road forcefully by the county with no choice.
Josh, would the annexation not be whatever we declare it to be on paper? If we say we're taking it up to the easement where the road starts, that's what we would be annexing, correct?
Yes, Commissioner, that's correct. The, I think it's very common to do exactly what Commissioner Butler said. I do not think it's required. I think it's generally a negotiating point between the city and the county, and it may very well be a pattern of business in the past that that's how it was done. A lot of times, counties and cities will enter a memorandum of understanding or memorandum of agreement about how that process will work. And most of the time, when the county is requesting you take the road, it's when there's a larger development going in, a big parcel is annexed, there's a larger development going in with a lot of city services. So that more often is when you see that. But I have seen in other counties, other municipalities where the road isn't necessarily annexed.
Right.
And just one additional point, I know we talked about it not being contiguous. That's not, I think we stated, it's not required, and it's not totally uncommon. It's ideal that you prefer it to be contiguous, but growth doesn't always happen in a contiguous manner, right? Because generally in Tennessee, annexations are with property owner consent, the vast majority. So not everyone wants to be annexed at the same time. Not everyone wants to make that step at the same time. So the goal is corridors and different things, but just because it's not contiguous doesn't stop it, and it's not totally uncommon.
There's no legal aspect to it, right? But it is, I guess frowned upon, not frowned upon, but suggested against by MTAS and by the state to not create islands if you can't avoid it.
That is, that is MTAS's position, and I think generally it's meant, again, for larger developments. When you're looking at putting a lot of city services separated from the rest of the city, if it's relatively close and it's going to require a small amount of services, I think that weighs less in favor of keeping things contiguous.
Well, and sir, I understand your position, what you're trying to do, and I hope it works out for you. My position from the city's perspective is, one, our staff negatively recommended it. The planning commission unanimously denied it.
Unanimous.
It was, there were some abstentions, I believe.
It was a seven, seven zero vote in the notes.
Oh, that's, that's.
Probably an abstention.
It was an abstention. Either way, it was heavily, heavily denied by the planning staff or by the planning commission. MTAS and the state suggest that we don't do it. And with all the greatest intentions ever that you have with the property, you could get this annexed today, rezoned to RS 40, you could get home and get a phone call, and someone could offer you an absorbent amount of money to sell that property so they could build 10 houses on it.
No.
I get it, I understand that, totally understand it, but things like that happen, and it's something that we have to take into consideration when making decisions for the city. It's not about the individual, it's about what opportunities does this property now have? If you rezone that property, the rezoning is the rezoning. It doesn't matter about the intentions of the property.
Can I say some counters to that?
Sure.
Because we are going to have a trust in basically deed it out that we can't sell it while our parents are still alive, and we're going to have an agreement. We want to have an agreement between us, three brothers, to not sell while we're still here. We'll do that. We want to live here, we want to have 3.33 acres. And what I want to say in regards to the actual decision of the planning committee was, I believe that was based off misinformation. From my understanding, it was said, "No," because you would have to take care of the road and you'd have to maintain that road. If you annex up until the road, all you get is a net gain from this. You guys get money from the taxes, from the property tax, and you don't have to maintain the road at all. So it's a net gain for you. You don't have any negative at all.
But I mean, are we talking, from this whole county's perspective, is, I mean, is this like a handshake or a conversation? I mean, is there anything that substantiates that claim that the county's not going to turn that road over to us?
From my understanding, I contacted two people from the highway department, and they both claimed to me that the city has all the power in terms of what is annexed. They can't say yes or no to what is annexed. The city, you guys have all the power in terms of what actually is annexed in.
I've never heard of the county turning over any road to us. I don't think legally, we can't turn a road over to them, they can't turn one over to us.
We have voted on annexations where we've had discussions where the road was not included in the annexation, and when reported, the road was on the annexation and shown as city limits, and when asked, it was, we did not have a choice.
Personally, it makes sense to me that the county would try to offload any roads to a municipality if they could, because it's less that they have to maintain.
Oh, I would agree with that.
Yeah. But I don't, I don't know.
That's not what the county highway department said.
I understand.
Whatever the documents say we annex is what we annex.
Greg Bolt said that we would not have to take on the road.
Again, I totally believe that he said that, but in my opinion, words into a telephone don't necessarily hold water. And it's just a concern I have. So I think if we could get more information from the county regarding this road, I think that those decisions would be easier to be made. But as it stands, it's just, he said, she said.
True.
What happens if you do annex in, you get in a paper, and you have it written down that the road is to not be annexed in, written down, on that agreement?
And that is to remain that way until the city considered it or wanted it? I mean, that would change my, at least a piece of my outlook on this. I mean, I think having things in writing or confirmation from the county is a big part of this, right? Like, I mean.
Yeah, I understand that.
Word, I'm not questioning anybody's integrity, yours, the mayor's, the person at the county that you spoke to. I'm just saying that words don't really hold up at the end of the day.
Right, but my question would be, has it happened before in the past? Has there been properties that have not had the road attached to it? Has it happened?
I don't, I don't have that.
Absolutely, it has.
Not in years since we were told that we did not have a choice.
Again, it seems like there's some conflicting information.
Planner at the time was told by Williamson County.
Mike Madison? Or you're saying the planner at the time?
Our city planner.
Yeah, our city planner. The county planner or our city planner?
Our city planner. We voted on it without, without the road.
Oh, I don't trust.
The road was put into it by the county and told us that we had no choice.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't trust things from the past, so.
And let's just see where this motion goes, and if it does fail, I have another motion.
In test, this may be more for staff a little bit, in test has some notes for non-contiguous property annexation. One of the notes is, "In order to be annexed, the territory must either have an intended use for industrial, commercial, or future residential development, or be owned by a governmental entity in order to be annexed," which I guess would probably fall on the kind of line with the corridor annexation where you're having a mass, mass area coming in. So any relation or connection to that note?
I'm not sure when that note was written or if it's still accurate. I know the annexation, annexation by resolution was, and ordinance was changed in the last five years, I believe. So without knowing when that note was written and comparing it to the current statute, I'd just have to double check on that. I'm not certain.
Their current non-contiguous annexation policies or recommendations, took down and sent it to me last week, I think up until within the last two or three years ago, you could not annex non-contiguous properties except for in Williamson County in Tennessee. The other counties in Tennessee did not even entertain non-contiguous properties, and so.
Kevin Chastain from Griggs and Mahoney came in and did a commissioner camp and said that it was perfectly fine to annex non-contiguous as long as they're in the urban growth boundary. He sat right here and told us that right here.
Thank you, Mayor. I was present, but I don't think you can lump an annexation as a whole, one statement as every annexation that ever comes in the future. But I was here and present for that discussion.
He didn't discriminate or tell us that it had to be a certain way. He just made the blanket statement.
For those that weren't there, was the statement basically saying that there's no legal reason to not approve this? Like, there's nothing that's preventing us from saying yes? Is that what?
He said it's not illegal to annex property that's non-contiguous.
But he wasn't saying you have to annex it.
Well, you can choose what you want, but I mean, he said that it's not illegal to do it.
Again, nothing personal to the applicant. I just feel that we're having a lot of discussion on how to solve an individual's issue and not really talking about the benefits that the city's getting out of us. I don't, I don't see, other than a little bit of property tax income, without, without something from the county stating that they're not going to make us take that road because that would wash out any property tax revenue that would come from three houses. For me, I just don't have enough information to be able to say yes.
And what if we were to get a statement from the county, written down?
Personally, I think if you, if you did get that information, and as you stated earlier that you felt the planning commission was operating off of misinformation, I think it would be a good idea to go back in front of the planning commission with all the information and get a recommendation from them. We have a planning commission for a reason. I've served on a planning commission for years. When they give us a recommendation like they did, where it is, you know, if it was 5.4 or something, we can talk about whether or not they made the right call. But I believe it was 7.0, there might have been an absentee, there might have been an abstention, there was an abstention. To me, it was pretty unanimous to deny it. So for me, I would like to honestly see you go back in front of them and have this conversation with planning commission and get them to change their recommendation.
I don't think the planning commission, I think they acted really quickly on that. I was here, and I don't think they had all the information that we're providing today. So I don't think they had that much information to make a good decision.
Which I think, again, for those, for that very statement is exactly why I think you should go back in front of them, so they can have all the information.
Well, we've got the information today, and.
I don't feel we do. I think there's a lot of questions.
I just listed all the information from Mike Madison to.
Do you have a letter, an email, anything from that individual stating what you said?
Well, we can always provide that if we.
And I think that would be great.
Choose to approve it with that contingency.
That'll be part of my motion.
Mayor, if I may?
If it fails, then I get to make one.
If there, if it is an information issue, the commissioners may consider a motion to defer this matter to a future meeting where staff could undertake some investigations and potentially try to engage the county and get whatever information the board requests or additional legal analysis. I'd be happy to perform that and submit a memo to the board.
I personally see the deferral that you suggested to move forward with more information.
If the board did consider that motion, it would generally entail moving to defer the matter to the next stated meeting. It would require a second and a majority vote.
Or so they would have to withdraw their motions.
Let's start addressing the chair because that's the proper way to do this before you speak, please. It's getting a little. Please.
Sir, is your intentions after you get annexed to subdivide the property into three equal parts?
Yes.
We have a motion on the floor. If there's no further discussion, a vote aye means that you do not want to see this approved. A vote nay means it will be approved. I just want that clear. Any other discussion? Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Abstain.
Mayor Anderson?
Nay.
Thank you. Item 10A2 fails 3-1 with one abstention. Item 10B, rezoning 621 Highway 96. I will now open the public hearing. There's no one to speak, I will close the public hearing.
Nope, she was up. She's coming.
Yes, ma'am.
Kathy Self, SCLF, on 7209 Lake Road. Our property abuts the back, our back property line abuts the requested rezoning. And I'm looking for more information. I don't know whether to ask for approval of this or to ask you to consider not approving it because we have not been able to find any information about what kind of housing would be placed, what are the parameters? Do we have access to that information? So I'm asking tonight for information, if at all possible, before we can make an informed request of our commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak during the public hearing? Anyone else like to speak during the public hearing?
I'm, excuse me, I'm at 1062 Highway 96 North. My, um, I just want to make sure, because we don't know ahead of time unless people know how to research how this, uh, goes into the 2040 plan, just so people kind of know what track we're on. Um, so I kind of feel like maybe we should be putting more information out there when this comes up so that we know what the 2040 plan says, how it meets those, you know, those suggestions in the 2040 plan, um, and to make sure that this is really the route that Fairview wants to go. And just remember that we're going to have to supply the police, the fire. We got to take care of the roads. We can't even take care of what we got. So we need to make sure we can take care of everything before you approve such a high-density, um, development. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Item B2, second and final reading, ordinance 2023-11, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 4.35 acres of property located at 621 Highway 96, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 022P, Group B Parcel 007.00, Commercial General CG to RM8 Multifamily Residential, Property Owner SM Commercial LLC.
Move for approval.
Mr. Greer.
This property, the applicant is Mr. Timothy Mangram. He has submitted to the city a rezoning to rezone from Commercial General to RM8. Uh, in their application, they stated that this parcel is currently zoned Commercial General. We would like, uh, to rezone to RM8. The adjacent parcel to the south, we had rezoned to RM8. And the understanding at that time was this parcel being zoned Commercial General meant we had RM8 granted to this parcel since it was zoned Commercial General. However, that changed in 2019, and RM8 is no longer able to be built within Commercial General properties. The staff recommendation for this, um, is to approve the rezoning. It does not align with the 2040 plan, as this was zoned prior to the adoption of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, whenever, when it was originally, um, zoned. And for this project to move forward, it would have to come in alignment with the neighboring property, um, that is already zoned RM8 for this development.
Any questions from the board of Mr. Mangram?
I will say one thing. I'll be more than happy to speak to this lady after the meeting.
Sorry. Uh, one other thing I'd like to note, whenever this was, um, subdivided out, the six parcels that front Lake Road that are directly to the southwest of this parcel were six parcels that were split out of this property, um, originally in the development.
Yeah, that's correct. And that property was also zoned Commercial that fronted on Lake Road, and we rezoned that to R20 because it was approximately 10 acres, uh, eight acres altogether, and we took those six tracks out of it.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 10P, B passes five, zero. Item 10C, second and final reading, ordinance 2024-01, an ordinance for an amendment to the City of Fairview, Tennessee, Budget for Fiscal Year 2023-2024, Budget, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. Uh, I have nothing to add, uh, for, from, since the first reading. There have been no changes. Um, but I will entertain any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
Second. Any questions from the board?
I'd just like to say I, I met with, I, I met with Mr. Dougherty to just discuss this. I don't feel, since I wasn't part of the discussion last time, I think an abstention on this for me, um, I've looked over it myself as much as I can, but being as fresh and based off the short conversation that we had, I don't, I don't know if I'm, uh, anyway. But yeah, we did get into it, and I appreciate the time that you gave me going over everything. Um, thank you.
Mr. Dougherty, with your background in finance and our prior CFMO, you always lay out everything so well that it's very self-explanatory when we read through it, in my opinion. And, um, it leaves me not having many questions because you, um, lay it out so well for us to understand, and, and I feel like you have spent a lot of time and done a great job on this budget amendment. Anyone else? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Abstain.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Item 10C passes four with one abstention. Item 11, new business, 11A, Resolution 03-24, a resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners approving a schedule change for July 2024 meeting dates.
Move for approval.
Any questions on that? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Item 11A passes five, zero. Item 11B, Discussion Planning Commission Appointments. The reason I wanted, uh, this item for discussion only is because we need a little bit of time to allow our community, who would like to serve on the Planning Commission, to have the opportunity to put in an application to do so. So if there's anyone out there, uh, watching at home, or anyone here who would like to serve on the Planning Commission, we would, uh, love to have, uh, your application and have you come and speak before us at the next meeting. Tell us why you'd like to serve on the Planning Commission and, um, let us consider you. Anything from the board?
I think it's a good idea, Mayor. Thank you.
Since this is for discussion only, there will be no vote. Item 11C, Discussion Tree Ordinance, Commissioner Hall.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Being on the member of the, uh, Tree Protection and Parks and Landscape Board, uh, Tree and Landscape Board, uh, we've run into several discrepancies with our ordinance. Mr. Fred Rosenberg has been working diligently with help of the other members of that board to see about getting those corrected. What brought this about was I was asking the, uh, attorney, uh, about how we go about spending the money, uh, that's in the Tree Bank Fund. I've had several requests to, uh, do something to the median up there, um, at the cloverleaf of Highway 96 and 100. Uh, and he reviewed the, um, Tree Bank Fund ordinance, and there are some discrepancies there that need to be corrected. So basically, this is what this is about, is to discuss moving forward with getting the right, uh, wording in the ordinance, uh, so that we can, uh, the, eventually, the, the, the money will be approved by the board, but we need to have a direction of which way to go. And whether or not we can spend money on state land, since it is something that we've been maintaining for a number of years. Uh, and that's what, what my goal was, was to maybe remove the, um, shrubs left up there that's, um, a lot of times they're just, uh, just there and not been able to be maintained. I would love to see, uh, redbud trees put up there in the median, which is happens to be the, uh, city tree. Uh, there is not as much maintenance to those. We do have some dead, uh, redbud trees over in the actual cloverleaf. And one of my other goals is to get the sign up straight of Mr. Dan Cubic, who was, uh, a, a big part of getting, uh, our, um, beautification, um, of the City of Fairview. I'd like to have that done. I'd like to, Mr. Fred Rosenberg, to sort of tell us what he's been tasked to come up with. And, uh, he's done such a great job with it. I'd like to y'all hear his, um, reflection on everything.
Well, you have to take a look at the entire, what we call the tree ordinance, but it's really the tree planting and protection ordinance. And it's 13-400 through 420, I believe. And it was cauterized back in 2007. So there's been a lot of changes in the community into, um, how we treat our canopy because it's part of our citizens' assets, our tree canopy. So what we looked at was that we had to protect, restore, maintain, and expand our tree canopy for the citizens of Fairview. And in one section, which was 13-409, which had to do with the tree, um, planning and, a tree plant and the, uh, tree fund, uh, there were some discrepancies in regards to how we can use it, who can use it, and why we should use it. And so the three questions that we brought up on that, and it's a small paragraph, but it's so important to the entire ordinance, is what would the tree, uh, funds be used for? Secondly, where can the funds be used? And third, who has the authority to approve and distribute the funds? Right now, there is no authority to approve or distribute the funds. Funds go into the tree, uh, bank but can't be taken out, the way it's read right now. That was per the city attorney. So we addressed it as simply as we could, knowing that the tree ordinance and all our other ordinance, zoning ordinance, are going to be reviewed by a consultant, and recommendations would be made. But we wanted to do something that was simple, but also looked into the future and solve some of the problems we have with that particular aspect of the tree ordinance. So what we came up with, and I'm going to read it, and I'll tell you which part of it is what we added and which part is existing. The first part's existing. It's 13-409, Community Tree Plan and Tree Bank. There is hereby created a City of Fairview, Tennessee Tree Bank Account. That's existing. The purpose of the City of Fairview, Tennessee Tree Bank Account is designate a specific separate city budget account line that shall be, contain the City of Fairview, Tennessee Tree Bank Funds. Said funds in this account are solely and entirely to provide, and here's where we've made the change, tree and landscape activities on publicly-owned private, publicly-owned property of the City of Fairview, of Williamson County, of the State of Tennessee, and federal lands in any tree-related disaster located within or within 50 feet adjacent to the corporate boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee. The City of Fairview Board of Commissioners has a sole responsibility for the approval and distribution of the Tree Bank Funds. And basically what we did, in the old ordinance, it said that the Tree Bank Funds could only be used on city property. Well, we don't have a whole lot of city property. And we're looking at a Tree Bank Fund that's going to be a half million dollars in a relatively short period of time. And so we have a lot of county and state land. They've got the county, uh, library, got the health department, have all the schools. You have the rec center. You have Highway 100, which is a state highway, and the easements thereof. So when you look at where the funds can be used, it's relatively small. But if we incorporate the other aspects, the county, the state, uh, properties, we could probably get matching funds if we do anything on their property. And so it, it try, it made it really simple, but it gave you the authority to prove and distribute money. Right now, you can't. Now, you probably in the past have, but I don't think legally you could. And I think that's from the city attorney.
Mr. Hogan, can you speak to that?
Yes, Mayor. So, I, I'm not sure that it, it would necessarily be illegal for the B O C to distribute funds. They control the purse strings for the whole city. But the, the conflict in the ordinance is 13-409 from the city code creates the, the tree commission and, and does all the things just discussed. Previously, it charged the, the city to develop a tree plan, uh, and that was supposed to be attached as an appendix, and, uh, it, not sure whether that ever happened or, or, um, if it was incorporated later. But there's another ordinance in the design review manual that came along probably after the fact at a different time that gave the Planning Commission authority to, or purported to give the Planning Commission authority to, uh, administer some of these tree funds. The design review manual is subordinate to the city code, so that, that provision is likely invalid because it can't be in contradiction to the city code. So I think ultimately what needs to happen is probably staff needs to circle up and, and figure out with planning what needs to be amended in the design review manual. At the same time, the city code is amended. Who, who does the Board of Commissioners want to have the authority to decide about the distribution of the tree funds? And who should administer that fund? Should it be the B O C? Should it be a special commission or the Planning Commission? Uh, I think those are all options that the board can consider. And then amend the city ordinance, update the design review manual, and try to do all those things at, at one time, so everything's in step.
So you were saying that basically right now, we really don't have the authority to use those funds?
That, that's correct. The way the ordinance reads right now, that the, there was supposed to be a plan developed about how the commission should administer the funds, and it doesn't, I don't think we ever made it to that step of, uh, formally incorporating the plan that's supposed to guide the City Tree Commission. And as I mentioned, the purported designation. And as I mentioned, the purported designation to the planning commission for those funds is probably invalid and probably just needs to be revoked and cleaned up.
So you see the dilemma we have. We can't make any recommendations from the Parks and Landscape Board on projects because you really don't have the authority to approve and distribute those funds. And there's also the thing is expand where we can use those funds, in county and state right-of-ways and things like that. Of course, with their approval and probably get matching funds from them.
If I may, Mayor, just one more for point of clarification. Our assessment is this happened a long time ago, definitely prior to 2008. So what you're looking at is things that occurred a long time ago with a different set of people. So it's hard to say what happened first, the design review manual or the city code, but definitely, we need to bring them in lockstep moving forward.
There's quite a bit of other things involved in that tree, I call it the tree ordinance, that aren't relevant today. And haven't been, what, codified?
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Commissioners, I would indulge you to please have the conversation of how you would like for this to go and give staff some direction on what we need to... We can update things as you see fit, but if we could have a little bit of direction on if you feel that this is a needed change, a wanted change, and who should be making the distributions out of this account would definitely be helpful as we move forward with rewriting and evaluating our documents of record.
I'd say that we probably need to schedule a workshop and discuss all of this to get a better handle on how the zoning ordinance needs to read.
May I make a suggestion? I think you should include somebody from the Parks and Landscape Board because you have other things that are sort of attached. You've got the Tree City USA designation. You have the parks in regards to, like, Bowie Park and things of that nature. And it would make sense because we're looking at it from the tree aspect or the landscape aspect and how it affects grants that we may be applying for and things of that nature. So I would think, and it doesn't have to be me or whatever, but I think somebody from the Parks and Landscape Board should be involved in the changing or the reviewing the ordinance and make recommendations.
One other thing I'd like to add, excuse me, Mayor, but in order to get approval from the state, we've got to know what we can do first here before we can go to the state. Can we put redbud trees in the median of Highway 100 and 96 corridor? Can we replace the trees that are dead there? And so that's where we can't do anything until we know what we can do before we can go to the state. And I do have the people to contact there when the time is right.
There's another aspect that most communities haven't thought of, but with storms and what I call tree disasters, there's, these are the funds that could be used if they were in the code, that they could use those funds. Like if a tornado came through Fairview, and it's quite possible because, you know, Dixon had a rash of tornadoes, you lose a lot of your canopy. And the average citizen may not be able to afford to replace it. So we should be looking at down into the future in regards to that and how we should set aside funds for that.
Are you saying funds for private property?
It could be possible, depending on what the board says. Because if you take out a large portion of the private canopy, that's detrimental to the entire community.
I would be afraid that people would start seeing landscaping flow, you know, flow...
Obviously, you've got a lot of restrictions.
But let me say, if, I'm just saying, if we start allotting funds for private property, somebody's going to feel discriminated against if they don't get their bushes replaced. So I don't know that that's...
Now, we're not talking about bushes. We're talking about the tree canopy, which is an entirely different issue than from landscape shrubs and things of that, and flower beds.
Let me just say, have you seen Bowie Park lately? The last major storm we had with winds about 60 miles an hour, I've been in an all-terrain vehicle and been through the whole entire park. We've got enough trees down there.
Oh, yeah.
If we decide to spend money, we could clean all of that up.
No, right, but we're talking about a half million dollars to Mayor, at least. And I think there's some real creative ways where you can do it, not inexpensively, but can do it with money, with the eye on keeping a budget where you should have. So I just, you know, I think we have to look in the future. We can't just do what other communities have done because they've done that 15, 20 years ago and it's still in their ordinances. Times are changing. And we have to, it may not be exactly what I'm saying right now, but it has to be looked at. Remember, it's the citizens' canopy, not the commissioner's canopy. It's the citizens' canopy. And all the perks and all the benefits from a canopy. Cleaner air, less crime, believe it or not. The tree cities that have a big canopy have less crime than the cities that don't. There's a whole lot of different things that are benefits to the community that we should be taking consideration for. But that's a personal...
So, but you're referencing private property, right?
Depends on the program. It might be that a... See, if a tree gets damaged in a storm, it's susceptible to disease and insects. Well, that also creates a problem for healthy trees that are near it. And once you have, like, in the, a lot of state parks, once a disease hits a certain type of tree, it takes out all the trees. So it'd be beneficial, but if you had a tree that was damaged and the resident, and that's not what we're basically talking about, but let's say a resident tree went down, or partly down, and it died, you'd want to get rid of it. So if the resident took it down, took the stump out, maybe we donate a one-and-a-half-inch tree in place of it. But that's a whole nother issue. That's not what we're here to talk about. But I'm just on my high horse in regards to tree canopy and the welfare of our citizens.
And I think once the ordinance is... I think once the ordinance is finalized, I think it can be specific on those type things.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so...
But I think it has to be changed. Those funds are sitting there and just, they're collecting dust. And I think you should have the ability to use those funds.
Mayor, just a note, I think a workshop would be perfect if we could try and charge staff with a clear definition or understanding of what their, what the current process or understanding of the reasons is. I think, Mr. Hogan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like 13-409 in this code charges the community tree plan and then the design review manual triggered to try and be that community tree plan. Like, there's a notation in the design review manual that says, "This money will be placed in the Tree Bank Fund, which is limited to the cost of landscaping and planning improvements on public property and public right-of-way. A cost of $50 per caliper inch of replacement ratio will be required. Annual planning programs will be carried out with the mutual agreement of the city planner, parks director, and the Public Works supervisor." So it goes in a little more detail of who, and then it's the caliper inch, the widths, the trees.
I believe you're right. And I think that was probably after the code was written, and I don't think it did a good job. And Mr. Carter went through this kind of in-depth. I think what we found is that that may very well been the intent, but it didn't do a good job of specifically saying, "The city code says do this, and this is us meeting that requirement in the city code." So if that is the intent, I think we can do a better job connecting the dots there so there's no confusion about how the fund, how the city's funds are administered for this purpose.
Thank you, sir, Mayor. One other note, when I was trying to dig to find some of your answers that you sent us on this sheet, the resolution for the creation of the Parks and Landscape Board, Resolution 2018, had a note that said, "If the Parks and Landscape Board, failure of the Parks and Landscaping Board to adopt its bylaws within one year of the adoption of this resolution shall result in the abolishment of the Parks and Landscaping Board." So I think we probably need to revisit the Parks and Landscaping Board, get some bylaws and reestablish it.
We do, we have worked on the bylaws. Now, I've only been on the board a few months, but a gentleman has done it, and we were looking at the finalization to present to the commissioners.
So how far are we into that year?
That was 2018.
That was long, yeah.
So it's already abolished, then?
Yeah, it was...
Okay.
Technically, it's a lot...
There's a number of things in the ordinance.
Technically, we don't have a Parks and Landscape Board anymore.
Well, there's no tree plan either, you know. There's a whole lot of things...
The law says.
You know.
I think just in the workshop, we could capture and review and reestablish that with bylaws or whatever.
But we were trying just to address the issue of giving you the authority to use the funds.
I don't even know, I don't even know where to go with that because that right there... Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Fred.
Item 12, Roundtable, Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the staff for their good reports tonight. They always do such a good job. And as far as the creed vote, it was just too many gray areas there for me to put a positive note on that just yet. Would like for them to proceed further with the possibility of the four houses, if at all possible. That's something else that I think could probably work out. But I do appreciate your dad being willing to leave your family a home for the future. And that's not many families that that happens anymore. But I do feel for you and, you know, hope that y'all find a way that we can move forward with it, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner McDonald, welcome.
Thanks, sir.
Wanted to say that first. Secondly, I would like to... Rachel, I would like you to add on the next agenda for the city to create a three-acre estate lot zoning. Had the motion to deny the Creed's property not passed, I was going to make a motion contingent on that three-acre zoning being put into place within the city. And also, an email that I asked for, or correspondence from the county assuring us that what the county told us was going to be the true statement where you could look at it and say, hey, it's in writing, and we can move forward with that. What I heard tonight from the citizens was not that they were against them having the three houses there, but what they were against was the possibility of nine or 10 houses. So since nobody spoke up and said they were against them having three houses on that property, I think having the three-acre estate lots solves the problem. Never any more houses can be, can be added to it. Also, the fact that my motion was going to include, the road was not going to be annexed. It was going to stay a county road. Nothing, nothing would have changed. And I would have liked to have done it the one way where they could have just done, brought one acre in, but if that doesn't work with the families' wishes and everybody having equal land, I totally get that. So if this passes and we can revisit this and make it work, then there's a solution. If that doesn't work, I just, I don't know where to take it from there, so... But thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Completely agree with Commissioner Johnson's statement there. I think there's a solution to be found. I just don't think we found that tonight. I would just like to say shout-out to the Public Works guys. I know Facebook was running around with pitchforks at times saying their roads needed to be attended to during the snowstorm, and those guys were out there busting it. So just a round of applause to them, hats off to them. Appreciate everything they do. Thank you to everyone that showed up tonight for my sake. I appreciate you taking time out of your day. And I look forward to serving with you all. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations and welcome to Mr. McDonald. And I echo thank you to the Public Works Department for working so hard during the snowmageddon and all of staff working from remote to try and make things work and fit and continue to keep the city running. And now they're still playing catch-up out there fixing potholes everywhere today. So thank those guys for working tirelessly to try and keep us, all two of them? Is that correct? Is there a third one? We're just here, okay.
Well, two full-time.
Two of them?
I mean, yeah.
Mayor, that's all I have?
Thank you.
It was tough during the snow and ice and with two full-time, overtime employees. I'm excited that we are putting it out there that we'd like to hire more because our guys were, you know, working 16-hour days to try to keep up. But we don't have a snow event like this, maybe once every eight years. So it was, you know, I was able to get to work every day just because one of our citizens, he came and picked me up, took me, and took me home. And I got to see the roads every day. And it was just, you know, when you're scraping the snow off, the ice, it's so slippery. It, you know, it's just hard, so... And I tell you, I was surprised at the low, you know, occurrence of wrecks and stuff like that. I think everybody pretty much stayed home and tried not to get out there and put, you know, themselves in danger. I know I can't drive in that stuff, so... Anyway, let's hope it waits another eight years to happen again. And I'm excited to hear that we have several applications. I know that on Facebook, you know, people were asking me, "Why aren't the roads clean?" And I was like, "Well, you know, our guys are working really hard and we need more." So I'm excited that we have some applicants. Thank you, Tom, for the hard work on the amended budget. You always do a great job and always lay it out for us so, so well that we understand exactly where we're going and such a good steward of our community's money. I appreciate that. I have seen on Facebook lately a lot of achievements by students, band, JRTC, sports. I want to encourage this meeting. It's not just to vote things yes or no. It's to have a time that's, you know, during our awards and recognition where we can recognize our community and students for their accomplishments. I think it's nice for the community to know when they have an accomplishment. So I encourage, you know, I don't know exactly every time something happens, so I'm just asking. My number is, my personal cell number is everywhere. So please call me because I would like to have these groups come up and get recognized. I think it's good for the kids and it's good for the community to see when they have accomplishments. And I would like to recognize them. So please reach out to us so that we can do that during our board meetings that are on the first and third Thursday of the month at 7:00. Thank you to the police and fire. I know that y'all were ready and, you know, during the snowstorm to be out there and help. And I know you did have calls that you had to attend to, so I appreciate your hard work. Welcome to, Commissioner McDonald. Our board is now five-full, so that just helps us to make good decisions. With not a two-two vote, we need, you know, we need to not be caught in that situation. So welcome to the board. And thank you for the citizens coming out. We appreciate your input and those at home for watching. And always feel free, I know... And always feel free, I know the board is happy to hear from you and so am I. So let's keep our town beautiful. Our guys will be filling potholes, and let's just keep our streets and, and everything out here clean and pretty for, you know, our community. And with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.